Call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming to this June School Board meeting. First order of business, I did receive a call from Cindy Crimmens. She indicated she's not feeling well this evening, so she will not be with us. But I believe all other board members are here and healthy. Next item will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where we shall be met under God in the digital liberty and justice world.
We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Any comments regarding the agenda?
Mr. President, I would like to move number 10A following 8A number 6. So Superintendent's report just A, 2006, '07, new administrators introduction.
Questions or comments regarding that change? Any other additions or amended? So?
I'll second.
Mr. Minnick, need a motion for the approval of the agenda, and Mr. Kaiser second. Any discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Next item of business, approval of the May 9, 2006, regular enclosed session Board of Education meeting minutes. That board members had an opportunity to review both of those sets of minutes. Any questions? Any motions for approval?
Mr. President, I'd move approval of the closed session minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Holland. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bell makes his second. Any discussion? If no discussion, I'll ask for approval of the May 9 regular enclosed session Board of Education meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, the minutes are approved. Next item of business, student staff volunteer recognitions. We have the Spirit of Community Award, Mr. Ed Lucas. Would you step forward, please?
Good evening. It's a great honor to introduce two groups of students this evening. The first student has received the 2006 Prudential Spirit of Community Award, which is an award that is sponsored by the National Association of Secondary School Principals to recognize individuals for outstanding community service. And this evening, I would like to recognize and honor introduce Katie Brokaw. Katie, would you come down, please? Katie was selected to receive the Certificate of Excellence Award from the state of Wisconsin. She was in the top 10 percent of all the applicants within the state, and although she did not move on to the regional competition, it is still a great honor to be recognized as one in the top 10 percent around the state. And I'd also like to identify and recognize Katie as the winner of the Kohl's Kids Who Care Award, and this is a special award which recognizes outstanding community service as well at the local level from the Kohl's stores, and she was recognized at the, from the Woodbury store. She will now move on to regional competition for the Kohl's Scholarship Program, which will make her eligible to receive scholarships at the regional level of $1,000, or if she moves on to the national competition, at the national level, she could receive up to a $5,000 scholarship. So Katie, would you please identify some of the things that you've been involved in in community service in our community?
Hi, I'm involved in Community Action and Peer Helpers, Teens Against Tobacco Use, we call it TATU, and just some other random things, like Kids Who Care was a middle school and activities like that. Oh, I was selected for the Kohl's Kids Who Care Award because of the bullying and teasing sessions that we do at the middle school through Community Action. This year, I revised them and updated information that we used and presented to the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
The next group of students I would like to recognize would be our students from our high school math league. Do we have any of those students here this evening? Would you please stand up? The top members of our, first of all, our high school math league, for the first time in 20-some years, won the state competition. We have over 100 schools participating in the state math league competition around the state. Hudson took first with 161 points, Whitefish Bay at 160, Marquette University 159, Nicolet 159, and Madison came in with 158. So we were competing against some pretty high-powered schools throughout the state, and these young men rose to the cream of the crop and came home with the championship. The top winners, the state math honors role winners, were Matt Kurtmus, David Malin, Aaron Neffelcamp, and Braden Studelska. So what a congratulations, gentlemen. It was an outstanding job to bring home that state championship.
Thank you, students, and it was a pleasure for me, a very proud moment when I read that in the St. Paul paper, to see what we did at the Math League Championships. And also a thank you to, I believe, Mr. Hilding as a coach for the math league, so good job. Next item of business is...
Thank you again for having us here. Our spring sports, if you looked and read through the papers, and that had a very successful from top to bottom in our sports, all the way from baseball team upcoming, finishing right into the thick end of the regional play. Softball team had their best season ever. Tennis, right on the verge of sending some kids to state. Brought two, or three of our teams with us tonight that made it to state. First one is our boys golf team with Bill Schaub. Bill's been a golf coach here for nine years, been the head coach for, I think, the last six years. So Bill, you want to come and introduce your...
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here. Unfortunately, the gentleman by the name of Jimmy Hutchings, who was a sophomore here at the high school, could not be here tonight. He's actually down in Milwaukee in Madison for a 36-hole junior tournament, state tournament, and so it's wonderful to hear that, but unfortunately, he can't be here, so he... But he's out playing golf, which is good. Jimmy Hutchings was our sophomore coming in, came in probably as a number two player, and within two weeks, he was our number one man. He was a top scorer on the team throughout the whole season, was very consistent, excellent student, great listener, worked hard at practice, all the things you want to see in an athlete. He finished really strong, and when you look at the record as the season concluded, he won the conference, was medalist at the conference match, which catapulted him into third place in the conference overall for individuals. He then went to the regional tournament and had the second-best score at a nine-team regional tournament, and he continued on and went to the sectional tournament as an individual and was also the top scorer at the sectional tournament. And to top that, then, he goes on to state and shoots his best score of the year, two under par, 70, if you know what that means in golf, his first day, and then shot two over, 74 the second day, and had an even par for 36 holes, which was an awesome accomplishment. And that was his best score of the year, which was wonderful. The thing I like about Jimmy the most is he's just tough as nails. Nothing bothers him. He has a bad hole, and he comes back and has a good hole the next time. And the other part is when we're at the state tournament, he knew some of the students that were there playing from other tournaments around the state, and he talked to them, had fun with them, talked to them after we were done playing, and it was just fun watching him as an athlete and a student, the way he responded. So we're really happy about Jimmy Hutchings. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other two teams we brought with us tonight, it's probably the ones you read about the most in the paper, and that's our boys and girls track team. It's been unbelievable, the success and efforts that these young people have put forth this year. Coach Holam, the girls' coach, is on a much-needed vacation up in northern Minnesota, but Coach Ross is here to introduce the athletes for the boys and girls.
I also want to thank you for inviting us tonight. It's great to have these kids recognized, you know, in front of, you know, the school board, and I know this will be on TV, so they'll be excited about that. I'm sure they'll go home and turn it on. First of all, for the season, obviously, you've read a lot about the girls' program. I believe the only meet they did not win this year was the All-American Invite Indoors. From that point on, they went undefeated until the state meet, where they finished second. Other than the boys back in 1973, no team's ever even come close to doing that for track and field, and they ended up getting the runner-up trophy. It was awful exciting, there was no doubt about it, especially since it went down to the last event, the four-by-four, but not for our team. You had to watch nine other teams run, and that's when they found out. You know, Milwaukee King was the only team that could catch them, and they were seeded ninth in that race, and they finished third. They finished second or higher, it's a tie, or they end up third, Hudson does. But the kids we brought tonight, I'll start with the boys. Only three of them made it. We had eight boys qualify for state this year, and all eight of them got awards on the podium. That's kind of almost unheard of, but it was a lot of fun. I'll start out with Tim Fireisen, our pole vaulter. He finished sixth. He went 13-6 this year. He was fifth last year, and I'm sure you remember him from swimming when he was the state champion in diving. And Tim, I believe, is going to Madison next year. He's going to die for them. I wish he was here tonight, but I'm sure he's practicing somewhere. He's always been an advocate of that, there's no doubt about it. Another gentleman, Caleb Johnson, another unique story. You know, Caleb was throwing 46, 47 feet last year, and the shot put this year, he started out at a whopping 42 feet, changed his style of throws, came back, threw 54 feet at state and ended up on the podium in sixth place. It was really neat to watch Caleb progress that way. He was really exciting, and he was a lot of fun down at state. Once his competition was done, he was just, you know, a lot of fun to have around. And then for the boys' side, obviously, our pride and joy at the state meet was our boys' four-by-eight, setting a new school record, the 10th fastest time in the history of the state of Wisconsin. They also qualified for nationals, but they just weren't able to go because of family commitments, and they were just tired. The four guys that ran down at state put in probably the hardest work I've ever seen as far as distance runners go for our school. We've had some really good ones. Over the years, I'll go back a little bit here. I've figured it out now, we've only had two athletes ever qualify for nationals, John Shuna and Eric Vandenhovel, and now we had the boys' four-by-eight this year as a group. And the ones we have here tonight are Luke Weaker, he was an alternate on it, along with Steve Scoog, Luke's a junior. Steve is a freshman. You know, and people say, "Well, geez, alternates, what are they all about?" You'll find out, it's those two guys got to run at regionals, and they were a big help there because then two guys got to rest at meet. And then the big guys came in, sectionals and state, but they got to ride along, and I'm sure they enjoyed it. But Luke, would you stand up? Luke? The next two gentlemen is Matt Sinckata, John Dolan. John was our leadoff leg in the four-by-eight, and Matt was our anchor leg. They've been to state four years in a row. This was their fourth year. They never got on the podium. They're always the 100- and 200-meter guys, always running the four-by-one, four-by-two, four-by-four, sprinting. This last winter, last year, we were going to have them each run a 800 in a JV meet at the end of the year, just for fun, to see what they could do, and me and Coach Krupa got together this winter and decided to bump them up, is go to 800 and see what would happen. And of course, they didn't argue over it. They came out and worked their butts off. And John led off our four-by-eight with a 157.9, and then Matt anchored it with a 156.9. And then the two guys in between, Neil Scoog was one of our legs, another senior was the second leg, he ran 157.8, and Dan Cromer, our third leg, ran two flat, all four seniors. But again, it was just the excitement in the stands, because I was sitting next to Coach, you could tell with Wausau East right next to me, and they set their school record at the same time, coming in second behind us, and we're both looking at our watches going, you know, are we seeing the right thing? You know, because it was really a fast race. Whitefish Bay that won it, set a new state record, they're one of the top in the country. All five teams in the top five qualified for nationals if they want to go. That's how fast a race it was, and our kids hung in there. So that was our boys' program. We scored, you know, we were second in the conference this year, second in regionals, third in the sectionals, and then we ended up 14th at state. But our boys' program, I can't say enough about the kids and the staff that have worked with them over the years, is the last nine years, we've put more kids on the podium at state than all the rest of the Big Rivers Conference combined on the boys' side. And of course, you know what happened on the girls' side. The ones that are here tonight, if you three would stand up, that's part of our four-by-two. Megan Zeiss, freshman, can a spot, sophomore. Rachel Sado, freshman. The other leg on that one was Laura Lovell, who is a senior. She's the anchor leg, and they made it to state in the four-by-two. The two alternates were Sidney Valanovi and Alex Johnson, but I'll bring her up later. She was in the pole vault. But we had an excellent four-by-two. They ended up 12th. The year before, they made it, part of this team made it last year, Laura, so we had three new legs to work with, and they ended up breaking the school record again. And when they got to state, they ran almost as fast as what they did at sectionals to break the school record, which is sometimes almost unheard of. A lot of sprinters are happy to make it to state, and then they kind of back off, and the year before, not that they say they don't try, they just don't have the excitement anymore because they made it to the big show. These kids didn't. They went out and they really worked hard at it, and they came that close. You know, they'll get into the finals, and it was really exciting. So that was our four-by-two. Next is Alex Johnson. She was in the pole vault. Alex went 11 feet at state, correct? Finished fifth. So it was neat, we had two pole vaulters, a boy and a girl, both there, and she did a wonderful job this year. Again, she had to fight off a little bit injuries, but she came on big at the end of the year, and she's only a junior, so she'll be back next year. Let's see, distance running. We had Katie Cummings, 1600, 3200. She finished ninth and 12th, only a sophomore, so she'll be back next year. It is really exciting to have her back. Why can't I remember her name? Kristen Pezzle, our 1600 meter runner. She ran a 457 and change at state, one second out of qualifying for nationals. And then our girls, she was also on our girls' four-by-eight, along with Katie and Emily Keppelis, a sophomore, and Ashley Iverson, a freshman. Qualifying for nationals in the four-by-eight was 931, and they ran 931.06, so 600ths of a second kept them out. And the two alternates on that one were Megan Perrin and Ally Vance, that's right, both seniors. So the whole four on that group are back next year, and the state record might be in line for them, which is about 916, 917, and they're very capable of running that with all four of those back. Then the last one is Sharon Dahl. Sharon would stand up. Sharon was a state champion this year in the 300 hurdles. She was also fourth in the 100s. Sharon qualified for nationals in the 300s, and I believe you are leaving tomorrow? Thursday? Friday? She's leaving Friday for that. Can't say enough about this young lady. She put in a lot of work over the winter, weight room, speed and quickness, going to camps. I know she went down to River Falls University every Sunday and worked with hurdles down there with coaches, put a lot of work into it just to accomplish that. She was not going to be denied that 300 hurdle championship after finishing second two years in a row. I felt sorry for the other girls, because when she hit the turn, me and Jerry Yucatell were standing there, and you could see it, it was over. She still had 100 meters to go, but the race was over. You know, the other girls didn't stand a chance, she just took off. She showed a lot of heart during the year. She was obviously the MVP for the team. And probably the most interesting race was the four-by-four at sectionals, where she ran a 57.5 anchor leg, and those girls really pulled together, almost got that relay to state. So that would have been just one more group. But I think I covered all the girls today, Miss Amy. But again, thank you for having us here tonight. You know, these are just some wonderful kids. We'll all be back next year, a lot of them. The boys, we're losing a lot of seniors, but we've got a lot of underclassmen. The thing that was enjoyable about state this year, we had more kids from our school down there to watch the upperclassmen run than ever before. It was just a joy to see them down there, to actually see what goes on down there, because it is a real interesting show down there. It's big, you know, lacrosse puts on a great night, you know, we get to stay in the dorms right next to the track, and it's just really exciting for the kids. And then, again, all the parents in the support of the school district was just unbelievable this year. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, student athletes, and I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, and congratulations for what you've accomplished and those going on. Good luck. Thank you. And coaches as well, for all the work they put into it. Okay, next order of business. Board of Education committee assignments. I believe all the board members have received a copy of the committee assignments, and several of the committees have already met. One of the committees that is an appointment by the board president is the Long Range and Strategic Planning Committee. This is a temporary committee, just to perform the function of working on long range and strategic planning, and Mr. Bell is going to be chairing that committee. Otherwise, the committees that are in place are committees that we've had in the past, and we've just appointed new members as well as chairpersons of those committees. Any questions or comments regarding committee assignments? If not, we'll move on to Report 6B, Presentations to the Local Municipalities. Mr. Minnick?
I'd like to update the board. Superintendent Mary and Mr. Benoy and myself have gone out to all of the local governmental units, elected governmental units, at this point in time, except for Hudson Township. And the intent has really to, has been to go out to the other governments and inform them really of where we are in terms of our elementary space. And if you recall, the board took action to cap or verify really what we did through the strategic planning process, that we would cap our class sizes K through 2 at 22, and 3 through 12 would be capped at 27. So we informed the governmental units of that, and then we also informed them what the board had done to establish the capacities at each of our five elementary schools. So we emphasized to them that it was short-term, that we would be capping our elementary schools, specifically this year at EP Rock in Hudson Prairie, and that based on our anticipated growth in the district, our real crunch period hits 2008, 2009, and as an interim, short-term solution, we would be capping schools. Students would be going to Willa River, we have capacity. When Willa River fills up, we would be then taking students up to North Hudson, and conceivably, at some point in time, we well could see students being bussed up to Holton. So just an observation on my part, I thought the meetings went well. I think we were well-received. I think all the units were very appreciative of us coming out to them and informing them of what was going on, the actions that we were taking. A number of questions, I think, from the governmental units, and so I would, if there's any comments at all from Mary or from Bob, but, you know, concurrence, I think it went well.
I did want to comment that we just have not had the opportunity to get the meeting set up with the town of Hudson. We will be doing that as soon as we can get on their schedule.
Questions at all from other board members? And again, I think one of the things that we try to emphasize to them is that the steps that the board is taking are short-term solutions, and we have yet to arrive at a long-term solution for elementary needs at the elementary levels. So I'd be happy to field any questions.
My only comment is, you know, there'll be a lot of interest in the township because of, you know, Hudson Prairie being right there and...
Right, and being one of the schools that's capped.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, and just following on on Mary's comments, I would anticipate that we'll have good discussion with the Hudson Township Board as well, but that has not been scheduled, but that was mainly just due to conflict of scheduling, but we will get that done. Bob, any comments from your perspective? But I would like to thank both Mary and Bob, because we, I think we were well-prepared, the information was relevant, we had the charts and graphs that we showed to them on our capacities, we talked about our growth, and one thing we tried to emphasize to them is that the growth numbers that we were showing to them are students that are already in the district. And if we have, we've been averaging 3, 3.5 percent growth a year, if we even have a 1% or 2% growth, the numbers that we're showing to the other governmental units are even going to be larger.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Very good report. Is this information available on the Hudson website?
I don't know that.
Because this, I'm just curious, if someone from the public, because this, all of this information in this report, and I know a lot of this information's been shared in past meetings, but some of the graphs, I thought, weren't really compelling. For example, the elementary school, when you look at that over, you have it going out to 2014 and 2015, and up until that point, each of the seven years, it looks like, leading up to that date, the annual growth just at the elementary level is about 100 students? So...
Yeah, that's a fair comment.
Most of the materials are on the website. If you remember, we just sent out a postcard recently to our district residents, talking about our capacities and our projected enrollments, and the links to the postcard are, all of those pages are included in the links.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that information? If not...
Mr. President, not a question, just a comment. I think this is a real valuable step for us to approach municipalities, to have discussion, and while I believe that the website's important for information to get out, I don't think it takes the place necessarily of the opportunity to have conversation and interaction with groups like this, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to do this with other groups as well, just thinking of realtors and other groups that would have an interest in this, and just gives us an opportunity to get the word out to the community.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Next item of business, under Reports, Freshman Year Initiative. Sandy?
In January 2005, the school board approved the addition of a grade-nine transition class to begin in the 2005-2006 school year. Freshman Year Initiative, or FYI, as we often refer to it, focuses on three important domains for our adolescents, the academic, the career, and the personal social. The first year of the course has just been completed, so with us tonight to provide an overview is high school principal Ed Lucas, and FYI teacher Canyon Schultz, and I'll ask them to come down to the podium. We're having, we had a little technical difficulty, so instead of a PowerPoint, we ran it off for you, and he'll be... for you and he'll be verbally providing you that overview this evening.
The FYI course, last summer we ran four sections of it, and we are also offering four sections of the FYI course this summer as well. And we've had a number of requests from students to take the course during the summer because it does conflict with their regular schedule. Some of them are involved in band and choir and some in accelerated programs. So it's necessary that we offer a couple of sections of it during the summer. And then the rest of the students are divided up in between the fall semester and the spring semester. And of course, the whole major focus of this program is for, to help our freshmen make a smoother transition into the high school, to give them a solid foundation for academic preparation, and then of course, the social and emotional development is a consideration as well. And we've gone through our first year of the course, and as we do with all of our curriculums, we look to revise our curriculums and improve them from year to year based on the needs and the suggestions from our students and also the, from the counselors and other staff. Canyon Schultz was our FYI teacher this year, and I will now have Canyon give you a brief overview of some of the areas that he covered.
Thanks so much for having me. This is kind of a first for me. Like Sandy said, we're supposed to have a PowerPoint, but we're going to wing it with what's in front of you. We had six goals for the course, one was developed. I kind of went in reverse order for me, it just made sense in my mind. So Goals 5 and 6, we talked about best gain in the world of work and understanding process of academic career planning. And from that, we really hit on a website called WIS Careers. And in that website, we spent a lot of time, interest surveys, three different surveys. And from this WIS Careers website, students can then get into, getting into our four-year planning for high school. And we know at Ed's, that's really important, I think, as a counselor and teachers, so students can understand where they are in terms of their four-year planning, understanding where they might want to go in terms of post-secondary plans. So again, we're talking about college research, two-year college, military employment, whatever it may be. So they really get hit hard with that. And so they can kind of start seeing already as freshmen, you know, what classes I need to take now. So I take that back from our surveys to their four-year plans, we complete their high school four-year plans. And so it's much easier to know, and a lot of students struggled with, geez, I've got to fit all these classes in, I need to take all these classes in order to do what I want in terms of going to college. So it's kind of an open experience, and some it's difficult and it's a challenge for them. So in that way, we really hit on, you know, the best gain in the world of work and understand that process that gets them to the academic planning, to get them to the world of work. So I think we really concentrated on that, did a good job of that. Goals 3 and 4, understanding, respect self and others, and develop sense of community in high school. The textbook I use is called Top 20 Teens, and it covers three main areas, thinking, learning, and communicating. And the first one, thinking, I won't take up too much of your time, I was told to keep it brief. But one we talk about a lot, but I was living with a positive attitude, how students think. In general, we talk about in class, it's more likely students are going to sit around maybe a lunchroom table and speak negatively about school. So I really try to redirect them and think about positively, what a great experience you can have here, the social environment, the extracurriculars, the academic things, the things that get you where you want to be in life, and really start trying to, you know, click in their minds what's going to be important to them. Next one is learning, that's School Smarts, I've got a few bullets there. One, we kind of talk about making realizations, in the moment and after the fact realizations, and how students have to prepare themselves. Maybe they're sitting in chemistry two years down the line and they're wondering, what's this got to do with me? Why do I need this? Maybe there's something more in that class than realizing what notation is, chemical notation is. Maybe it's having to be dedicated, maybe it's having to communicate to a teacher, taking those things on where it could be valuable in the workplace or in post-secondary planning in college or careers, excuse me, or in military. Next area we talk about is communicating. And at that ninth grade level, students love talking, we talk about it. I say, I hear you guys talk all the time, but not a lot of listening. So we really talk about listening. We have several strategies and techniques I give them in order to listen better to their parents, to their friends, to their teachers, to their coaches. And you know, you guys are all very much professionals and understand what it's like to be communicating effectively with others. So that's something I really think is very important for this group, so they can advocate for themselves in terms of having difficulties with a teacher, or a peer, or a parent, wherever it may be. So they can learn from each other, learn from those experiences, and have a better life. Through meeting those goals, we do things, our daily assignments, of course. One of the things we do is a weekly journal, where students are taking the lessons, I've talked to them, and they apply them to their personal life, and they write about them back to me. And they're confidential, and there's a lot of great things that come from there. And students can really have taken a lot of lessons to them and taken them back to their families and their peers and their teachers and coaches and have used the techniques. In class, we do a lot of participating and sharing. And it works well with smaller class numbers, but even larger classes, we find a way to get everybody to get a voice within those class periods. A lot of great things are shared in their personal lives, and we have great discussions, building on other students' issues that maybe having in the school environment, which is great, so students are helping students out and building that sense of community that there is someone there to help them out. From that, one of the important pieces we have that they can, that they'll have, but it goes with the counselor, travel with them throughout their careers, their student portfolio. In this portfolio, they have their four-year plans we talked about, so next year's counselor can look at, well, this is what you looked at last year, are we still interested in these things? Maybe their interests change, which is fine, but at least we've got an idea of where they're at. We've got goals in there, excuse me, their learning style profiles, we do their career and post-secondary plans, they talked about all those interest and skill surveys from WIS Careers, we printed out and put in there. Eventually have test scores in there. I also hit on extracurricular activities that they've been involved with, and also things they want to be involved with, and how to go about doing that. You know, who's in charge of it, what teacher's in charge of it? There are some students, I brought a few groups in, a few kids that talk about different things, and in class we talk about everybody's involved in something else and sharing what that's like. So in that folder as well, their portfolios, extracurricular activities they want to be involved with. So the counselor will look at that, well, I see you on part of NHS, how do you strive to get there? Those kind of things. Then Goals 1 and 2, really believe we hit Five, Goals 5 and 6, the career planning, active planning really hard. 3 and 4, trying to be a better student, better person. Goals 1 and 2 hopefully will follow in terms of improving high school academic achievement and improving that attendance and graduation rate, those things that we hopefully can see, you know, in a couple of years. Again, with students completing that career research, understanding their four-year plan, that this is their important job right now, understanding who they are as a learner, who they are as a person. And from that, also being able to communicate better with their peers, with their teachers, self-advocating for themselves, having that portfolio, so the counselor going with them, knows who they are, have a better picture of who they are. It's tough for the counselor to meet with 430 students and know them all, but you know, say someone comes in and they have an issue, counselor can pull out, oh, here's XYZ's folder, I have an idea of now who this person is. And I think that's going to be a great tool for us. Looking to the future, I know Mr. Lucas talked about a learning style survey that's going to be attached to Skyward, that students will take and be in there, and teachers and counselors can look at that and really get a good idea of who that student is. And there's more things I can talk about that I'd like to add to the class, but I don't want to take up too much more of your time. I don't know if there's, open up the questions or?
Thank you. Board members have any questions for Canyon?
Mr. President, I guess I had a question.
Mr. Kaiser.
Thank you. Question or comment? Mr. Schultz, with, I guess, you know, I look at Goals 1 and 2, those are the ones that probably interest me probably the most, and that'd be as it relates to academic achievement and the attendance and graduation rate. When is the intention to collect some data for those two goals?
That's a great question. I know it's something that Sandy and Ed and I have talked about at length, and how to best get information, how FYI can actually show that those numbers increase because of it. And I don't have an answer for you at this point in time in terms of how in three years, what they learned as freshmen will travel through. That's something we're researching and trying to figure out, a little more hard numbers. This semester I took a survey of the students, and I have some results, I don't know if we want to hand those out or not, based on some of these things that you've talked about, trying to find some numbers and some hard data that we can look at. And again, we're continuing to work on that and trying to find a way to do that.
I guess, you know, just speaking for myself personally, I would like to see that data sooner rather than later. Part of the reason is, as those who may recall, I was not the initial supporter of the FYI as a required course. And I guess I still have some feelings in that regard. It, you know, disturbs me a little to find out that, you know, we needed to have four sections of this during the summer, which I assume is to accommodate approximately 100 kids, for the reason that there would be scheduling conflicts with other courses in the fall. And, I mean, I guess that was one of our concerns. And I guess I do sort of hate to force our students to make those choices and to, in fact, have to attend a course in the summertime merely because they are participating in band or some other course in the fall that conflicts with this. So I guess, you know, it would be my hope that we can get some data, and I realize of course, obviously for, you know, graduation rate, that that's by necessity will have to come farther down the line. But for attendance and academic performance, I guess I would believe that that could be gathered at the end of the academic year following the FYI course, particularly for those that took it summer or first semester. Because I would, you know, I'd like to see some of those, some of those numbers. I don't know how, you know, the rest of the board feels about this. I still have misgivings about this being a required course. And so, you know, I'd like to see some data that would really, I guess, justify requiring all our students to take this, because I still have some concerns.
True.
I do want to clarify that we did move the required health to the middle school. And so for some of those students, if that health would have stayed as a ninth grade requirement, we would have had the same thing. Those students who wanted to be in band, in choir, take then their health or PE in the summer. So we did bring that requirement down, and so our requirements remained equal at that point.
Sure. I guess, and I understand, I guess I would put health in a different category than I would FYI as far as being a course of value to all of our students.
In 2004, we did a survey of all of our students, it was called the Survey of High School Student Engagement. And one of the questions on that survey, especially for seniors, was how did you feel about your career planning at the high school level? And understanding that we are a large school with almost 400 students per counselor, that gets to be a difficult thing for those counselors. And that was one of the areas that we were rated on that we needed significant improvement in. And so, which meant that our seniors and our students want more career planning, they want more assistance in it. And this course provides us that opportunity to be able to fulfill one of those needs. And of course, we, you know, being it is the end of the first year of the program, you know, we have one year worth of information or one year worth of data that we can put together in terms of attendance and academic performance. But that is limited until the program is, they had an opportunity to run for a couple of years, and we can get more feedback from the students, especially as they become juniors and seniors. Because it's at that point when they are doing their career planning or when they are finalizing their high school schedule, it gets to be a challenge for them, because they have to fully understand what the academic requirements are for getting into the post-secondary schools. And we have, with our current senior class, graduating class, we have over 66% of them going on to two or four-year colleges. So this information that we're getting, giving the freshmen, is going to be valuable and save them some time and some stress over the following years.
Any other board members have questions for?
Mr. President, just a question regarding how you view this initiative. In terms of, you know, as I look at it, just for the first time really, in the last day or so, I see it as a service to our students. How would you describe the value of this initiative academically? What's the value of it academically?
I think, when you look at the transition programs across the country, freshmen have a difficult time transitioning into the high schools, especially as the high schools get larger. And they are the ones who get lost in the shuffle, they fall between the cracks. Across the nation, we're seeing that today, our teenagers coming into the high schools are really struggling. It's a different social culture that they're moving into, and many of the schools are adopting similar types of programs. We're one of the few that have, I would like to say, stepped up on the leading edge and make it, made it an academic requirement that forces our students to help them make this transition. Sometimes, you know, we have to personally, have to tell the students, this is what we really need. And many of them think that they can make the transition without help, but in reality, they do need some assistance. And this is, this program is designed to help guide them and to give them that information in areas where they're going to struggle at the high school level. And so we, administratively, we feel that is very important for them. We can hit on those key points and those key areas that we know freshmen struggled with when they come into the high school. And as we become larger and larger, it gets more and more difficult to, for students to know their fellow classmates. And this is one more opportunity to merge together and to understand that they as freshmen are all struggling with similar problems coming into the high school. And we'll evaluate at the end of the course, the effectiveness of that as well, as we gain more experience, more time with the program.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President, just getting to Mr. Kaiser's comments about looking at data and evaluating the program, we could, if you're interested, have Ms. Kovach and Mr. Lucas and Mr. Schultz put together a plan to actually gather data over time and share that with the board so that you could see that in the future, knowing that the data is delayed because of the timing of the course and so forth and the goals. But we could put the plan together and bring that back to show the board, if you have interest in that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Bell?
Just a couple of comments. I kind of agree with Mr. Kaiser. This is a, I think we need to make sure this is real relevant and we keep an eye on this program. I think a before and after, maybe assessment from the student, kind of their views on things before, what they were after the course was over, you know, did they actually, and then, you know, maybe this program continues, look back in juniors and seniors and go back to this particular point, and, you know, was it really relevant? Did it, what did it make an impact on the student's, you know, high school career? And if it's not relevant, then, you know, we should evaluate. Those are a couple of ideas I just listened in on this, so.
Any other board member comments?
One comment real quick. I found it interesting, Mr. Lucas, at the graduation ceremony on Saturday evening, and I think it was you that mentioned, we've now graduated our last class with 300 students, 360 or 365, and henceforth, it's going to be 400 plus. And in the, I do have some questions also on the elective versus, you know, required portion of the FYI. And I guess where I've been coming from on this is that we are growing, our class sizes are getting larger. And if this is an assist that we can give our students, it's a positive, just like we had tonight with all the student athletes, both boys and girls in front of us. And so we have a, we're helping those students to be engaged and be involved, and I originally supported and continue to support the program. But I do think we've got to, we have to begin to show the value, begin to benchmark it, particularly, I think, as we get into those class sizes of, you know, 400-plus students as we move forward.
Thank you. Any other board comments? I, for one, I think this program holds a lot of promise for our students. I like to believe that it's geared towards achieving success for our students. I, my sense, and I have a freshman as well as a senior this coming year, my son is taking it this summer, and so far, he's enjoying it. And he's been asking me some questions related to this course, and I think they've been very good, meaningful questions. It leads me to believe that it's getting him to think about, you know, as he goes into high school, what he should be, you know, focused towards, and starting to think about, you know, what it's all about. Versus, I have a feeling that prior to this class, maybe we weren't providing that, you know, necessary focus or direction to students, or it was a little harder for students to obtain that. So I like to think that this is going to help our students. So I like to think that this is going to help our students succeed, and I think that was the impetus behind this program as number one, is what can we do to help our students get, you know, go through high school with some purpose and aim towards success and helping them get directed either towards post-secondary education or, you know, careers, you know, finding out some more information about those activities, as well as being able to connect the dots. You know, what, what does chemistry have to do with, you know, becoming an optometrist? You know, those types of linkages, which I think also is taking place with this class. So based on what's, what I've read and heard, I think there's, there's a lot of promise with this program. So I'd like to, you know, give this program some opportunity to, you know, go forward, and I'm sure it's going to develop, and I'm sure we'll get the data to, to see how it's, you know, progressing as the years go, go along. And yes, I agree, I think we have to evaluate as we go along. But I do think that this program holds a lot of promise for our high school students. Any other comments? Next item of business, correspondence. Do we have any correspondence? I, I don't think we have correspondence. Okay. Topics for action, consent items. Consent items include expenditures in the amount of $1,701,179.47. Any, entertain a motion for approval of the consent items?
Also moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Minnick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holland. Any comments, questions, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next topic for action is, the item that we've moved up is the 2006-07 new administrators. Introaction.
Mr. President and board members, with the contracts that you just approved, that completes our 2006-2007 administrative team. And you'll meet a couple of those administrators this evening in a few minutes, but I wanted to just point out that they have very big shoes to fill. This is the last meeting for Arnie Fett and for Bob Benoy, and as well as Lena Omen, who has been serving the board as well. And Kathy Schimman will, has also been serving the district for a significant length of time. The three administrators that I just talked about leave a significant legacy and wonderful contributions to this district that I can only hope to do something in my tenure in this district. But they have done a wonderful job for our students, our staff, our school district, and definitely for our community, both for the time they've been here and the legacy that they leave for the future. And I'd just like to thank them before we meet our two new administrators. So thank you very much. And Lena, as well, thank you for your time serving the board. She will be moving on to another position in the district. So, thank you.
I'd like to echo those thanks for both Bob and Arnie and Lena. These individuals have done tremendous service for the school district, both in the areas of personnel and facilities and, and finance. And I think if, if, if we look at the condition that the school district is in today, both financially and excellent personnel that we have, I think we can attribute a lot of that to these individuals. So thank you.
At this time, I'd also like to pass the baton to Bob Benoy, who will introduce our new administrators that, whose contract you just approved.
Thank you. First, I'd like to introduce Melissa Gould. She'll be our new principal at Hudson Prairie Elementary. Currently, she's a building principal in Northland Pines School District in Eagle River. Melissa has a master's degree in educational administration from St. Thomas. And interesting enough, she started her career as a student teacher at EP Rock.
Good evening. It's nice to be here. I drove down from Eagle River this morning and we didn't have any sun, so it was great to see some sun. I'm very excited to be in Hudson. As Bob mentioned, I served in many capacities in Northland Pines, being a smaller district, but it has led me to ascertain that my passion lies within the principalship. So I'm very excited to get started in a larger school and to lead a very successful staff. Just a little bit of information about me, I grew up in Durand. My folks are still in Durand, and I have family members spread out throughout the west central Wisconsin. I have a sister in River Falls with her family, a sister in Eau Claire, and a brother in Bloomer in Randolph. So it's great to get back to this area. I've always had a keen spot in my heart for the Hudson area and St. Croix General. I did my undergrad at the University of River Falls and then continued on in the master's program in St. Thomas. So thank you so much for the opportunity to serve as a principal. I look forward to getting to know you all better. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Next, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Ninneman. She's the Director of Personal Services. She comes to us from the University of Minnesota Carlson School of Business in their HR department. She has a master's in training and development and currently working on her doctorate in organization and management.
Well, I just want to thank you. This is such an honor and a privilege, and I have big shoes to fill, so it's a little bit nerve-wracking. He's been here a long time and he's done such a great job, but I really look forward to the upcoming year, and this presents some interesting opportunities for everybody. You have such a great school district, and I'm so honored, so honored to be here. This is just a dream. The St. Croix Valley has been my home all my life. My dad was a teacher for 30 years, so this is just a very momentous moment for me, and he's very excited, and I'm very excited. So I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. We look forward to working with you.
Lastly, I would mention one administrator who couldn't be here, Barbara Poone, is going to be our new Associate Director of Student Services. She's currently on the instructional staff at the University of Wisconsin in River Falls, teaching special ed courses. She has a PhD in educational administration. She has served as a special education teacher as well as a special education director prior to coming with us.
Mr. President, on behalf of all the administrators, I know that we are all looking forward to working with these two talented administrators and also Barb and Tim, and looking forward to the coming year.
Lot of new faces, so looking forward to it. Next item of business, occupational therapy services agreement. Nancy Sweet?
Is it services agreement? No. Yeah, that's better. Okay. You have in your packet on page 127, an occupational therapy services agreement. Because it's a new agreement, it's a separate item on the agenda. We certainly do have other services agreements in place with individuals and with service providers for a certain number of hours per week. This particular agreement is for approximately 22 and a half hours per week. And this was the best way for the district to fill this position and these particular hours. This isn't new, it's a replacement type.
Any comments or questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agreement.
Mr. President, I would move for approval of the occupational therapy services agreement as presented by Ms. Sweet.
Mr. Kaiserschat makes a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bell seconds. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Next item for action is the early release and late start dates. Ms. Cravens.
I also have Mr. Lucas joining me to help with the secondary component. As you see in your packet, the principals have proposed for next year our four late starts and two early releases, as we have had this year. It was something new that we tried previously, or previous to this school year, we had only had early releases and... And we made the change this year due to the fact that we wanted a more sustained period of time with our staff. Overwhelmingly received positively, in which to train our staff in a variety of different topics, which I will share with you in just a moment. We also spoke with several of our parent-teacher organizations, and informally, randomly throughout our school, we're questioning parents about their perception and their feelings on the change to the... ...why we made the change. We really didn't have any opposition, at least in the elementary field. A lot of people take advantage of the school age care program, which provided care in the morning as they would in the afternoon if we had an early release. And so several families took advantage of that. A lot of families commented how it was kind of nice to have their children sleep in a little bit longer, so. I just wanted to share with you today, before taking any questions, just a little update on what we did as an elementary staff during our late starts. We had four of them this year. October 5th was used with, to train kindergarten through second-grade teachers on the DRA assessment, which is a new assessment we gave to assess air, reading, and it's the Diagnostic Reading Assessment. We gave that in the fall and in the spring to students in K1 and 2. Grades 3 through 5 continued their work in interpretation of MAP, measurement of academic performance scores, and how to use those results in their class to, or to design instruction within their classroom. December 7th, K through 5 teachers worked on the new spelling program. We implemented a new Rebecca Sitten spelling program, so we revisited it, had the opportunity to ask some questions and talk about assessment. February 21st, we worked at our buildings in areas that we felt we needed to address in relation to the movement towards balanced literacy. For example, my particular building at North Hudson Elementary worked on sixth trait writing. On May 10th, we brought all of our teachers together to update everyone on the Balanced Literacy Plan that has been proposed by Sandy within the last few months, also talking about the support that would be provided, activities that would be happening throughout the year. One of the unique pieces that we had during that time was Peg Shoemaker pulled all of our specialists together and had a brainstorming session on what they would need to help support student learning within the specialist area. And so it was a really nice time that we spent with them as well. The one other session I want to just bring up that we had in January was probably one of our most successful staff development opportunities we have had yet. In relation to balanced literacy, we have several very skilled teachers in this district that surpass some of us in the area of balanced literacy and use that expertise to provide mini breakout sessions to provide training for other staff. And I kind of thought of it as a make and take workshop in a way. They acquired some knowledge, but also learned some strategies that they could implement immediately within their classroom, and that was by far probably the most well-received workshop we have had yet. And then we had two early releases in November 22nd and March 3rd that were used for grading purposes at the end of the trimester.
At the secondary level, first of all, starting with our early releases, we, those early releases at the secondary level are designed for pulling together grades at the end of the quarter and also at the end of the semester. And our special workshop day that we have in January in between the semesters is designed for pulling together semester grades and also beginning preparation for the second semester for a whole new round of courses that, that come up the second time around. For the late starts this year, we had a new initiative at the high school with the implementation of our online grading program and our online attendance program. And this was a new program that was started this year, was new for Skyward, which is our student information program. And we, during the course of the year, we had an update on it. It was, because it was a new program, they needed to make some revisions, and we had to learn those revisions, so we spent a fair amount of time learning that program. And right now, we are very successful with it, and teachers are feeling very comfortable with it. We are also doing the MAP testing at the freshman level, measures of academic performance and, in math and reading. And part of that, those late starts, were used for team development time, so teachers could also use that, that time to look at those scores and design instruction. The other initiative that we have on the, on our plate right now, and we are continuing to work on it, is writing our units according to Understanding by Design. That is an ongoing process that has taken a couple of years with so many courses that we offer at the high school. It's a way of reflecting back on our curriculum, rewriting our curriculum, so that we can be better instructors, so that our students are better learners. And we also, at the same time, are in continual review of our curriculum. We are on a six-year cycle. Each of our courses are at a particular stage, and we use that team time to go through and to review that curriculum and to meet the guidelines set forth by the Curriculum Council and what we should be doing at different stages in different years for the revision of that curriculum. So it's been extremely valuable time for us to have that opportunity for teachers to get together, to collaborate, to plan, and to improve instruction at the high school. And also at the sec, at the middle school level as well. It's the secondary programs, which is very similar.
Thank you. So what you have in front of you is our proposal for next year. As you can see, we have four late starts planned and then two early releases. Three of the late starts would be K-12 as far as the same time. The only difference would be, our last late start at elementary would be in May, and I'm losing it here. I can't remember where the last late start for secondary is. I'm sorry. Oh, December 1st. They moved theirs up to December 1st, and we kept ours at May. May is a really busy, busy time at the high school with finals and every graduation. It's very difficult to have it at that time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Board members have any questions for Ms. Cravens?
My only, I, I spoke to many parents also about this and was surprised to see how favorable parents were to the late start. My question would be, is there a need to do the late start and early release? Can we have it one way? I mean, is there, there a rationale behind?
The rationale for the early release is that we always typically have it on the last day of the trimester. And sometimes we're still finishing up unit assessments during that morning because we kind of cut it close. It's better to have that option in the afternoon to do grading because then we also take afternoon attendance, and so we can immediately apply that to the report card. So that's the only reason that we would consider, or that we would like to continue to have two early releases.
Any other questions, board members?
I do, Mr. Chair. Skyward.
Yes.
I know that's our student informational program. Is that an onsite software that we load, or is it network-based or internet-based?
Are you talking about the online report card?
Yes.
Okay. That would be a question for you, because elementary has not quite there. That would be a question for you because elementary has not quite there yet.
It is an onsite program.
It is, okay.
And, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then I did have just a comment about Ms. Cravens. Can I embarrass you in public?
Wouldn't be the first time.
Well, it wouldn't be, that's true, that's true. Well, I just wanted to publicly let the board and the members in the crowd tonight know that you have received your doctor degree, degree in education.
Yes, thank you.
Did I embarrass you appropriately?
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
I promise not to do it again.
As Mary always says, we're always learning, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of
Thank you.
early release and late start date calendar.
I move the, the adoption of the early release and late start calendar proposal of 2006 and '07 as, as presented.
Motion by Mr. Holland. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Kaiser-Schott. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next item for action, elementary reading, writing, and spelling plan. Ms. Kovach.
Thank you. On page 131 of your board packet, I'm sure you found a copy of last month's literacy plan that I presented. It lays out for us for the next school year, a very intense plan to provide high expectations, high levels of support, as well as high levels of accountability for our teachers in the areas of reading, writing, and spelling. And this evening, we are here seeking your approval.
This item was on, at our last board meeting, we had discussion on it. At this point, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the elementary reading, writing, and spelling plan.
Mr. President, I would like to make that motion, just to first preface it with a comment that I just really was very impressed by the literacy plan here. Very well laid out. I liked the criteria for evaluation and just, it was very comprehensive and I thought it was very well done. So with that, I would make the motion to accept the literacy plan for reading, writing, and spelling.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Kaiser-Schott, a second by Mr. Bell. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. Thank you. Final topic for action is the resolution on shared cost modification from Wisconsin Act 25. And Mr. Fett is going to give us some information on this somewhat confusing proposal.
Well, one thing, I am glad to give my final report to this board on something that's very beneficial to the district. So it's nice to end a career on something that's halfway positive. But the, what this is, is a law change that is, that is very beneficial to the district. And if you look on page 146, I'm taking you all had a chance to possibly read this, about this law change. But if you look on, just on page 146, says which districts will likely benefit from this law change, and that's us, because we're into negative aids here in the Hudson School District because we have such high valuations, high property valuations, that we are into this negative aid. And because of that, we benefit by this because what it allows us to do is to take some of our debt that we have on the books, with at the state trust fund loan, about 182,000 a year, we pay into this. It allows us to eliminate that from our shared cost. So because we can eliminate it from the shared cost and because we were in the negative aids, that means we'll get more state aids from the state. So it's really a very positive law change for us. The only thing that we're required to do to make this really beneficial is you folks have to pass this resolution on page 148. And if you pass that resolution, we'll save thousands of dollars. So I'm asking for that to happen. If you want to know more, you've had a chance to read it, but if you want some more information, I will, under discussion, I will answer your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bell?
Did that just come out of the current session of the state legislature?
Yes, it's just occurred, yes.
There seems to be an incentive here to, with this, to pay down our debt. Is that, or is it a specific?
Well, it's part of this unfunded liability that they're trying to get at for districts to get an incentive for districts to, to pay that down. I mean, to, to get that paid off. And so that is all part of that whole initiative, the unfunded liability.
And over the past few years, we've made some rather significant payments towards that liability.
With this, there is that portion that we paid for this, but this is as part of the Wisconsin retirement system, which in 1999, we, we built into the Wisconsin retirement system. We paid it off through a state trust fund loan in 1999 because we could pay, we could save money doing that at the time because we had a lower interest rate. But now with this change, it allows us to make these payments and not share in the part of our negative aids we receive. So it's very, it's a very good thing for Hudson.
Any other questions from board members?
Mr. President, just an understanding or clarification regarding this, and that is is that this is aid that'll be then adable in the year 2006-'07 budget.
That's correct. Our expenditures we have this year are always become the adable portion for next year.
And then next year at this time, or at some point in time, we would review this again, or is this something that?
It would, Tim would need to pass the resolution again.
Okay.
And I would have it passed right away, just for the simple fact, I'd probably put it back on July for July to pass because it is a, there's just no downside to it for, for us.
Mr. Chair, I have one, one question that I, I don't mean to stump you, Arnie, but I'm just curious. How many districts are in a negative aid situation? Any guess? I mean, 10%, 20%? I don't mean to ask the non-fair question, especially your last meeting.
I truly would be totally a guess. You know what? I, I don't know, but I would guess it would be under 10%.
Under 10%.
And the only reason is because our valuation is growing, so that's such a almost, I don't want to say alarming rate, but you know, very, a very rapid rate. And because of that, we, our student growth is not near as high as our 12, 13% valuation increases.
I was thinking you might say, you know, 30 or 40%, but
No.
You're probably, you're probably right, though. It's not that.
I would guess I.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fett while he's still here?
Mr. President, I just want to make a clarification before someone makes the motion. Obviously, we'd fill in the blanks with
Oh.
Hudson School District and St. Croix County. And then in the second line, I know Arnie got this, this was sent to us by the Department of Public Instruction. It seems to be a typo in the second line. The word "used" with a D at the end, I'm assuming it should be that the school district used fund balance.
And it's probably appropriate that we read the, the resolution?
That would be correct.
I'll make a motion to the effect of approving the resolution and I'll read it into the record. It'll be resolved by the School Board of Hudson, School District, St. Croix County, Wisconsin, the school district used fund balance to pay the school district's unfunded pension liability directly to the Wisconsin retirement system or to pay debt service for debt issued to refinance the balance of the unfunded pension liability. State Statute 121.07, paragraph 6, sub-paragraph AM, Wisconsin statutes, supplies for the district expenditures made the 2005-'06 fiscal year, adable in the 2006-'07 fiscal year. Also move.
We have a motion by Mr. Minnick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holland. Any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved and the resolution is approved. Thank you. Any, anything else on that? Moving on to Board Committees Advisory Council Reports. Mr. Minnick on the Facilities Committee meeting, June 7.
Okay, I'll take a, just a real quick summary of the Facilities Committee meeting. We talked about summer projects, pretty straightforward, typical roofing. We got improvements going on at the middle school, improvements going on up at Newton Field. I think the key items that, that came out of the Facilities Committee and which I would inform the board tonight is that the, we looked at, or had discussion on short-term goals in terms of elementary space, and then we had discussion on long-term. Essentially, what the Facilities Committee did was reach a consensus that we do have a shortage of elementary space in the, in the district. And I don't think that would come to anybody's surprise, but again, I think just doing this correctly or procedurally, and we've talked about capacities of the elementary schools, we've talked about class sizes. But I think this is kind of the first time that we've had it come through the Facilities Committee to say, yes, indeed, and that we do have a shortage and, and reach a consensus on that. So that was the first step that we, that we took and are so informing the board tonight at, at this meeting. The second thing that we did was based on moving away from long-term and going into, or going away from short-term and going into long-term solutions, we asked the superintendent of schools to begin to develop options, long-term options, of how we as a school district can begin to address our shortage of elementary space. The one thing we did ask is to revisit the Facilities Task Force report as one of the options and then also to evaluate, determine other options to bring back to the, to the Facilities So I would certainly entertain any questions or comments from the board on the report back from the Facilities Committee.
Any questions, comments from Mr. Minnick? If not, are you?
I'm, I'm done. I'm done.
We'll move on to the Finance Committee meeting. Mr. Holland?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met last week, last week. We had three agenda items. The first was a potential issue of the bus contract extension, which we had been informed by, or notified by our, our bus contractor that they would like to talk to us about the extension of the bus contract after the terms completion of the current contract. However, there were some things that they were going to follow up with and discuss and determine and didn't hear back from them and therefore we, I guess, tabled that, that discussion at this point. The second item has already been discussed through Mr. Fett about the shared cost modification, which we discussed at length and, and did our best to understand and ask questions about. And I think we have a pretty fair, fair, fair knowledge about it and understanding about it. And I guess the bottom line is that saves us, saves us money. So, and finally, the, the third item was just the development of our 2006-'07 budget. It's in, it's in process at this point. It's being developed. We have, we have factors that are yet to remain, are yet to be seen, that'll make determinations to, regarding that budget and we will look to have a final budget for approval at the October meeting or this fall sometime, so. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from Mr. Holland? If not, thank you. We'll move on to the Personnel Committee meeting of May 30th. Mr. Kaiser-Schott.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you just said, the Personnel Committee met the evening of May 30th. That committee now consists of myself, Ms. Cravens, and Mr. Bell. And during that meeting, we reviewed the personnel items that were approved earlier in the agenda this evening and then spent most of the meeting in closed session discussing negotiations and other specific personnel items.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments for Mr. Kaiser-Schott? If not, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report, Summer School.
Well, thanks to Learning Services, Sandy and her staff, Anita Stillwell and Pat Burns' work. Elementary summer school is off and running and they have approximately, give or take, 974 students attending summer school this summer. So we're using those schools well. We have many staff involved in summer school. At the high school level, last week, I had numbers and these change daily, so they are not exact, but about 680 students are involved at the high school. At middle school, there are about 97, and then there are summer band programs as well, and I don't have those exact numbers. But know that our schools are being used well this summer to help students continue their learning and to provide additional learning opportunities for them in the summer school that we provide.
Any questions for Mary? If not, we'll move.
Mary, I'm just curious, the, what's it, the Backpackers Program, like a preschool program? Just don't know, well, is that included in those numbers?
I'm going to let Sandy respond to that. Some of the students do travel between Willow River, the Backpackers, to North Hudson. That's the only site that we provide transportation. So they're in, the numbers, if they are traveling to North Hudson, but otherwise, they're not in our summer school numbers. That would be another figure that would be interesting.
I'm sure everybody's wondering, why would I be asking about Backpackers? Well, I think I'm the only one on this board, yes, I'm sure I am, the only one that has a grandchild, so that grandchild was in the Backpackers Program, so that's why I was curious. It just shows a little bit of age.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, citizens' request to speak to the board. We do have a request to speak from Brett Pickering. I would comment, though, that we were not able to, as a board, discuss the item that he's wishing to talk to the board about because of our current negotiations with that, with that group. But nonetheless, if you'd like to get up and, and make some comments, we welcome those.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Brett Pickering. I'm the union representative with the West Central Education Association and I represent the custodians in your district. We're currently bargaining, and I know you're going to be looking at that when you go into closed session, so it's not my intent to get up here and debate merits with you and things like that. I would simply ask for my group to, to kind of give a presentation because we know you're going to be considering it. I, I just, I would like you to keep in mind when you go back and you look at the proposal that we provided and the attendant materials that go with it. Custodians are often a group that are overlooked a lot of times. You know, we talk about our great schools that we have in our communities. We talk about the great teachers, the great staff, the great administration, things like that, that we have that make our kids productive and good members of society. I, I still agree that these groups probably don't get enough accolades either and certainly board members taking time out like tonight, like you guys are certainly deserve those accolades as well. But one group that's often overlooked are the people who are cleaning the schools and to maintain it. You know, we talk about the increase in use, you know, your, your enrollment rates are going up and it's difficult to get new facilities built, you know, some of the equipment that you have to use over and over again. Well, the people that maintain it and keep it functional are a tremendous asset to the district. These are people who make your facilities last longer and work better for the students that are accommodated. And that's the group that I represent. In addition to this, these are the, these are the groups of people that the kids see every day. These are role models, these are people within the school, and this is a group that you want to have quality, high-quality, good people working in these positions. Now, I regret to say that Hudson, while it is a fantastic school district in many respects and has attracted very quality people to and has attracted very quality people to its, to its district, and looking at comparable school districts in the Big River Conferences, if you look at your wage rates, you're going to find that they're quite low. And that's why I ask that you give serious consideration to the materials that I provided along with the offer that looks at the Big Rivers Conference, the wage rates, and things like that. Give that serious consideration, and serious consideration about the utility and the productivity and the benefits that these people bring to your district when considering the offer. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. With that said, we'll move on to the next item, which is to adjourn to closed session pursuant
Mr. President, I do have a comment that I would just like to
Oh, I'm sorry.
... under number 12, Board and Administrator Response to Public Comments. And Brett, I appreciate your comments about the value of our custodians and buildings and grounds crew. They certainly do a wonderful job. I've been very impressed since I've come to the district about the work that they do, and they are very valuable to this district and provide a wonderful service and are definitely models for our students. So I think we all agree on that point.
Thank you. Thank you for those.
Mr. President, actually, along those lines, if I could just make a comment as well, just sort of echo a little bit what Mary had just said too. Having just participated in the senior all-night party and all that entails, I just can't say enough about the custodial staff and how they stepped up. They had a lot of extra work to do. This was a 24-hour deal, and I know it put a lot of, a lot of stress on that whole crew here in the high school, and they did a terrific job, so I just want to thank them and know that we acknowledge your efforts every day. Thanks.
Well said. And along those same lines, the graduation ceremony that took place, which was very well done, and I applaud the work of all those involved. But, you know, the quick work in setting up and tearing down that whole stage, and we owe all those folks a lot of credit for that. Any other comments? If not, I'll accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prentice I, Subprentice E, for the purpose of negotiations of labor contracts.
So move.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Minnick and a second by Mr. Kaiser-Schott. All those in favor? Do we have to roll call? We'll have a roll call. The vote started with Mr. Bell.
Bell, aye.
Kaiser-Schott, aye.
Turnhoi, aye.
Minnick, aye.
Holland, aye.
Haddish-Aline, aye.
The vote is unanimous to go into closed session. And one other item before I, before we go into closed session, would like to just mention that next month, I'm proposing to this board that we consolidate our regularly scheduled meeting to be part of our board retreat, which is on the 18th. I think we can get both items done without taking away from our, the purpose of our retreat, so if the board members are okay with that, I think we'll go in that direction. Okay. Thank you.